Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Jake Mates Davis.
Present.
And Councilmember Rebecca Williamson, absent. Councilmember Jim R., District 2.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District 3.
Here.
And Councilmember Joe Gabia, District 4.
Here.
We have the forum.
Jim, you can move down one, she's not going to be here tonight. You'll have to get all the way down there. You afraid I'm going to punch you? Thank you. Any opening remarks? I don't have any opening remarks. We're going to try to make this a fairly short work session. Pre-regular meeting agenda review.
Is this on? Nope, no.
I think it's on.
Is it?
Yeah, I think it's on.
Is it? Okay, alright.
Pull it real close.
Okay. Alright, we'll start off with council's agenda. Under opening remarks, would you have a commendation?
Hold on.
Well, I don't think the volume's on. Try it, Marie.
Hello, hello, hello? Or I should say, testing one, two, three, is that what you're supposed to do?
Test, test.
Test.
Need to staccato of the T.
Hello, 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 test, is that it?
Say it again.
Test, hello?
Say it again.
Hello?
It's getting there.
Hello, hello, there, I think that's it, okay.
If Trey's happy, we're all happy.
Okay.
Stand back. Just going to give you a little echo.
Okay. Alright, opening remarks, we're going to have a commendation. A commendation for exceptional service for Officer Joseph King, and the chief will handle that. Under the consent items, these are all meeting minutes from the 24th and 25th of February. Why, I still feel like I'm not on. Okay, and then the zoning map update, we'll give that to you. We're making a lot of progress. As you'll recall, we do have Pond and Company engaged to do this work. They're working on Phase 1. They've acquired the updated Hanson file that, from DeKalb County, that their, DeKalb is using. They've also... Am I being heard?
Can you just come talk directly to me?
Well, I'm going to start chewing on it here in a minute if I get any closer.
There you go.
Okay.
That's good. Hold it like a rock star.
Don't hold it like that, it'll cause it to feedback. There you go.
Okay. Okay, and the last point that I wanted to bring up, again, on this Phase 1, Pond has already discovered 160 additional hard files, and they have been acquired from DeKalb County. We think these newly found 160 case files are part of that missing 20 years, so they are working on that, and there are weekly meetings that Susan Cannon has with Pond team, so we'll continue to keep you updated. I'm going to keep this on the agenda until this work is complete.
Okay.
Quick question, you mentioned the Hanson system.
Yes.
Isn't that the one that we had the initial problems with? Are they relying on that, or are they going back to, I think it's called the Penn system?
Yes, both.
Okay.
But remember, coupled with this, they're also looking and reading minutes from the 1950s forward. But this is just information in their meetings that they've had with the county on what they've been able to secure and obtain, but there's a lot of cross-referencing that's going on right now because, what we understand at this point, nobody wants to own up as to which system is the true system. So we have to look at both, and we have to look at the minutes. And then, once we do that, and with these additional 160 files, we'll look at that, cross-reference that, and then, you know, continue these weekly meetings, and hopefully get through the first Phase 1, the inventory, initial inventory of all of this, and then we go from there. Okay, City Hall update. I'm excited to at least tell you this, there's a lot going on. There's a roll-off trash bin that's sitting out in the back of City Hall I've had, and just the last, part of late last week, and this morning, I had a meeting with Delta Life Insurance. Brad was with me, we've had conference calls with them. There I go, I can hear myself now. Okay.
It's pegged out, hers is pretty high, but it might be something wrong with that microphone or the channel, so you might want to try that one.
Okay, well, there we go. Where we are with City Hall right now is, we have some good news to report. Our date for move-in, or actually, our date to move out of our current location is March the 31st. We have had a number of conversations, meetings, onsite visits with HIT Construction, who is the contractor for the owner, and the building for the first floor will be available for us to move in by March 31. So employees will be in the building March 31. Now, what that means is, on the first floor, that floor is really where a lot of the work is being done with the development community and the building community. Building inspections will be down there, our fire marshal is down there, our facilities manager is down there, our... I'm trying, I'm going through the floor plan.
Revenue.
Revenue is down there, too. Our receptionist is down there, and then our incubation center is down there now. We'll be able to move all employees to that basement level, and as we stage the building, Stage 1 is, the first floor will be completed, we'll be able to move out of our current location, and then as the second floor and the third floor are completed, we'll start moving employees up. During that time, when we move out of our current City Hall, there are about eight or nine of us that are going to be moving, that are not part of community development, public works, or building inspections, but that would include the mayor, myself, the city clerk, communications, HR, and finance. We're going to move, and council, correct. Well, we're all going to be sharing space, bunking up, but Delta Life has offered us a suite of offices to be able to operate out of that building next door to City Hall, which is fully furnished right now. So we are working towards that, that end. In fact, they said we could start moving in now, but we'll wait until we're ready to make the move, where everybody moves at the same time. My biggest concern was to be able to relocate building inspections and not interrupt the development community, so I'm very pleased to say we're not going to be doing that. So when business closes on Friday, the 28th of March, the building community, development community will be told to go to our new address on Peachtree Road, and communications will be getting that word out, we'll be getting more information out. So by the time we're all moved into the building, it could probably be towards the end of April, and all of us, meaning just those that of us remain, that are going to be in the Delta Life building, which is also called the Brown Mackey Building, but Delta Life prefers it to be called the Delta Life Building. And I'm all for that, too. They've been very generous on accommodating us and providing furnishings for us, also parking for us, so they've really been a great corporate citizen. So I'm glad to share that news with you, and we'll keep this on the agenda until we actually move. Brad is doing a yeoman's job in facilitating this move and getting ready. We do have a very strict and limited budget, so we are watching that, and that's the reason why we're having weekly calls and weekly face-to-face meetings. I will be getting back with you soon. I have reached out to have an owner's rep for us onsite. You know, we'll have Vince, who is our building official, but we have the architect that's done the price drawing, pricing drawings, and I expect we'll be on hand to do some additional refinements as we get into the building. Had a meeting onsite with Brad in the building with the superintendent of the job, and probably in a matter of an hour, we saved several thousand dollars on some change-outs, so happy about that. And that's just for the first floor. So we're making progress, and in the next week, I hope everybody starts to pack, because we're moving. Alright, that takes me to the parks update. Tom and I have been meeting and cataloging, if you will, all of our parks. I had a meeting yesterday with the county manager. I do want to make this statement, because I think there's been some confusion in the public that the city was purchasing the parks yesterday. We did not purchase the parks yesterday, we're not going to purchase them tomorrow, and we're not going to purchase them this week. But we are very close to purchasing those parks, and there is, out of respect to the county and to Zach Williams, the county manager, he has brought in his internal team to be sure that there is a proper transference of this. Our city attorney wants to do settlement statements, I've shared that with the county manager. He's on board with that, and that offers us a good track record of exactly what we're purchasing, and for how much, and what's included in that purchase. Mike Edelson in GIS has already prepared for me the attachments that will go with that settlement sheet. So everybody is very clear on exactly what's being conveyed and what's being purchased. So I'm hoping by our next council meeting that I'll be able to report to you that we've indeed purchased the parks. So my next meeting with the county manager is March 24th.
Will that also need to be approved by the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, what he's doing is, he is putting that on their agenda to get that released. There's a couple of other things that are going on, too, that I'd like to mention as part of the meeting yesterday, and I know I've discussed this with you either individually or as a group, that a number of years ago, Governor Perdue provided funds for green space initiatives, principally purchasing land to remain open and clear as open space or green space. Some of it over the metro area were improved with parks, but principally, this is for preserving land in its natural state. I discussed that with Mr. Williams yesterday, and I told him that I'd like to get an accounting of that, of all those parcels that were purchased, and they are working on that now, and that's why my next meeting is going to be March the 24th. That is being inventoried and delineated as to how much parkland or open space land and where that is exactly. Once we have that, I feel certain, when I sit down with the city attorney, that we may want to do some Phase 1, just to see what we're getting. The county right now is maintaining some of those areas in a limited way, but they're pretty, you know, in some areas, they're mowing and blowing and going, and they don't want to continue doing that, so they're very happy that I brought this up yesterday to them. In addition to that, through their stormwater utility program, there were funds collected out of that, those utility fees, that were used to purchase parcels, sometimes remnant pieces along and parallel to streams and creeks, and I have asked for them to surrender those as well, since we now are managing the stormwater utility program. They're going to do the same as the green space, they're going to inventory all of that and identify that by acreage, and they said that they did not want to receive any more statements from the city of Brookhaven on the collection of stormwater utility fees. So they're ready to unload those properties, and we need them, because we need them as part of our buffering and protection along the creeks and streams. Now, in addition to that, you know, there's been some remapping through FEMA on floodplain maps, and where the lines have changed, FEMA years and years ago provided funds for local governments to acquire parcels that were found to be now in the new floodplain areas, especially the 100-year, sometimes in the 500 line, there really wasn't an aggressive move to purchase. I did discover yesterday in my questioning of the county that they did indeed receive FEMA funds and they did purchase. In fact, in some instances, they even purchased homes. So I've asked them to surrender that as well. So all of those matters, they are now accounting for them, they're going back in time to inventory, delineate those on a list. Zach is going to get with his team again next week just to go through that, and then back with me the following week, and then to create a transition plan on when those are going to be conveyed to us. So I'm very excited about that. These are not parks, and that needs to be clear, we're not paying for this. This is FEMA land, your tax dollars that pay for the purchase of land that either had to be condemned or it was negotiated as a sale. Some properties did include houses, some of them have been demolished, some are still remaining, according to Harry, who's with the public works side. Harry Carrera.
Harry, Harry, Kara.
Harry Kara.
I think.
Yeah, something like that. He was in that meeting. The right people were in the meeting yesterday, so, you know, we'll see what the inventory includes, and if there's any improvements of the parcels.
The majority of them, as a matter of fact, I think they've just recently closed, as recent as a week or two ago, closed on another lot in Drew Valley.
Right, one's getting ready to be demolished, and Harry told me yesterday they're going to stop the train on that now, as they convey it to us.
I say go ahead and demolish it, because, you know, but anyway, we'll leave that up to you, but the great thing about it is, is they're almost interconnected, and there are opportunities to provide greenways and gas systems through some of the neighborhoods, because they're clearly following the stream and...
Right, it's going to be a wonderful conveyance for the city, and again, I just want to make it clear, especially since the media is here, we're not paying for that. We're not paying for FEMA-purchased properties, we're not paying for storm utility properties, because property owners paid those fees into the stormwater utility program, for which the county was able to take that money and buy land for the protection of the course of the stream. So that's coming to us as well. So a lot of good things, it was a very good meeting, very cordial, I'm very grateful to Zach Williams for his cooperation, and more importantly, for getting the right people, staff members in there that had this institutional knowledge, because he admitted he did not have it. So glad that we got that done. So that's where we are, that's partly parks, and then also additional lands. The next item is the Beaufort Highway Improvement and Economic Development Strategy Contract. As you know, we've already executed that contract, but what's most important is, we are going to have our first steering committee kickoff meeting. I've already notified the steering committee members, and that's March the 21st at 10:30. The meeting will go from 10:30 to 12:30, and that's in City Hall, our current City Hall, in the lower level, in the conference room where we just recently had a work session. So we will be meeting there.
Are we able to attend those, just to listen?
You most certainly are as a citizen.
Okay.
Absolutely. In fact, I did reach out to our development authority members, because some of the members are serving as steering committee members, but this will be a valuable tool to them, as it will be to us as a whole city, but this will enable them to better recruit areas for redevelopment. So I've invited all of those members. We are going to advertise, because these are appointed committee members, and they will constitute a quorum, so we will have to give notice to that. But yes, love to have whoever would like to come, absolutely. But we're nearing this time now of getting contracts completed, and let me just mention to you... Here it is. If I may, on, there's a folder that I've given to you all, that gives you a synopsis of the different contracts that we have that are being reviewed currently for the different plans. Gresh and Smith and Partners have been selected to do the comprehensive transportation plan, and I've given to you the summary of the deliverables, the scope of that summary, and the cost associated with that work. Also, the same for Jacobs, who will be doing the comprehensive plan in addition to the regional plan for 2040 assessment, which is a requirement of ARC, and then the... We already have the Lowe's plant in the parks, and that steering committee probably will be later this month. Transportation is probably going to be the week of the 24th, so we're trying to get these contracts back. Our city attorney has them, fortunately, and which I'm very appreciative of, he's created a boilerplate contract. All of the firms, the consulting firms have them, they're reviewing them now. It's my hope that we'll have comments back. We have one of the consulting team members here, so I'm sure she's listening, that we, I know that it's with their attorney, their firm's attorney, so I hope we have those comments back by this week, and that we can have the rest of our steering committee meetings later on. I will say that Lowe's and Associates for Parks and Rec, they were here last week, they spent two days with our parks director, they are going to be coming back, and when I have that schedule, I will want to reach out to you all, because I would like you all to have an opportunity to meet with them, talk about the parks in your districts, what you see, and just to give them some input. So please stay tuned for that. Also...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was going to go onto another subject, go ahead.
The, you have community work program, is that outreach to the community, for instance, on the comprehensive plan and those things, and how much time in each one of these contracts is there being devoted toward public hearings, public meetings, particularly, you know, as much for the parks as anything? I mean, we've talked about having almost a meeting at each park to try to get the community involved.
Oh, absolutely. Well, every time, yeah, thank you for that question. Every time the steering committee meets, you know, we're going to, we'll be advertising first and encouraging the public to come. The steering committee will be there, and we'll have tables and chairs set up, and if there's extra tables and chairs, you know, the public at large that comes in can participate equally with those steering committee members. A lot of those initial meetings are going to be to solicit, tell us where you live, tell us what you'd like to see, and we'll have maps rolled out on the tables, and markers and pens, and people will be drawing, like Fitz Park's, where they'd like to, what park did they use, would they like to see it expanded. So there's, the consultants will be walking around facilitating that. Some of those meetings, I'll be there, our assistant city manager, Susan Cannon, is going to be there, and certain staff members assigned to each of these plans. And so a lot of it's going to be extracting, you know, from the community, the steering committee, their job is to really be the speaker for others that are not showing up, you know, what they hear from where they live, or what their practice is, whether it's a park, or it's driving in the city, or if they have a business here. How are they interfacing with these initiatives? So the job of the consultants and the job of staff members coming in is to be able to record those comments, because that's all part of the citizen participation plan and program. So there'll be a listing and an accounting of all comments that are made, so they'll, in the appendix, as I envision it, there'll just be a list. Here were the meetings, and here were the comments, and sometimes those comments will be repeated over and over, which might make sense then as to why certain recommendations will be made, as we hear those over and over from the public, but there will be. In certain instances, and what you have in your folder is just a synopsis, it's not the detailed dates, and we'll be reporting that. That's why I want to keep this on every agenda, so that we can make announcements as to our progress and what's coming up. But we will be making sure that, you know, this information is disseminated properly, but also, there's going to be, during the interim period of all of this work, there'll be certain stop points where we'll take back, consultants with us will go back to respective committees, to commissions and to authorities, and just talk with them about, this is what we're starting to hear. Stan Siegel, who is the chairman of the planning commission, has met with me several months ago and said that he's very interested in having briefings, periodic briefings to the planning commission. We're going to be giving that to you all, too, as well. So, you know, it's, we want the community to not find a reason that they didn't hear about it or didn't know, because we want to talk about this each and every time.
And I understand schedules need to be flexible, but to the extent we can publish a list of meetings, in other words, you know, all the parks, and get that out there as soon as we can, twofold, one is to hold the consultants to a schedule, but more importantly, let the citizens know, they may be wanting to attend, you know, one or two or three, particularly the park meetings, let them know when each of those are, so that they can plan and schedule quarterly.
Right. And we're going to do that, because that's going to be part, there's going to be a lot of housekeeping rules at the first steering committee meeting. We're going to encourage all those steering committee members to bring those notebooks, because they're going to be filled during this process, and there will be a schedule for the term of these plans. And we will, you know, announce those, and we can publicize the whole list, and of course, with an asterisk, that might change, but at least people can be attuned to, hey, there's going to be two meetings in May. I can't make the first one, but I can be there for the second one, so we'll do that.
Thank you.
It's not specifically listed here, but I wanted to add that. You know what, I'll wait, because we've got it further down here, don't we? Yes, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sort of getting ahead of myself, and I'll just be patient and wait. Okay, just keep your folders open. Alright, other than that, under new business, we do, no, yes, thank you, number five, under the announcements, the introduction of the new police officers, that's going to be the next meeting.
Okay.
So that was an error, that we placed that on there. So if we can just remove that. I know, they're coming.
Remind me again the date on that Beaufort Highway?
March 21.
And the time?
And the time is at 10:30 in the morning till 12:30. Now, and also, we're going to alter these times, some will be during the day, many will be at night, so the public has an opportunity to come. Our first one is, like I said, at City Hall, but Oglethorpe University had a meeting with myself and Bates, and opened up the university to us in classrooms, which is just going to be fantastic, because it will be a good environment to do some work in, so we're looking forward to that. Okay, under new business, number one, that is our Chapter 16, and we have, along with our city attorney, Tim Tanner, here as well to review that.
I have a handout, I think some members of council wanted an outline, actually, of the existing DeKalb County Ordinance, Chapter 16, to see what we were bringing over and what we omitted from that, so I have those for informational purposes. And behind those are the actual ordinances that were omitted, so if you review those, and if you have any particular feelings about their inclusion in this transfer over to our own existing ordinances, please let me know, we can always accomplish that and discuss that in greater detail. I've met with the police chief, and we think we've got this in almost final format, I did speak with him prior to the meeting. The false alarm portion of this Chapter 16 was brought over from Dunwoody. It's very complicated, I guess would be the best word I could use for that. It calls for a registering scheme with the city, people have to somewhat, they would have to register with the police department. He thinks, and I would have to agree with him, that a less complex, simple, false alarm ordinance would be more in order. I have that, that's not what we have in the package, but he prefers that, and I would have to agree with him. It would be simple, so many negligent alarms in a certain period, and you would get a citation. And typically, it's just to make the homeowner, put them on notice, let's get the alarm fixed. I think it's very lenient, but, you know, when you have resources being dispatched, we need to get that fixed. So, again, that simple false alarm ordinance is not in what you have, but we can simply accomplish that. I've sent you various forms, some of them with the comments, some people, I think some councilmen had some comments, I've tried to answer those, and in the comment section itself, but if you have any other questions, I'm here, and I can certainly try to answer them to the best of my ability.
Where do we start? D, one of my comments was about, there's a whole section, you hear about public transit ordinances and laws and things, and a question about, I think we talked about that applying to MARTA, but we've also got at least one, so private public transport that operates in Brookhaven, and I'm wondering, and I think you may have somewhat answered the comment I had, but thoughts of council, or thoughts of both council, legal council and city councils, to having some of those apply to the...
The private.
The private bus system that's running up and down Beaufort Highway and throughout other parts of Brookhaven, and they're, you know, they're very general ordinances that are, but... And they're, you know, they're very general ordinances just that are, but what?
There's a taxi cab ordinance that we have that we should review. And if there are other systems, private systems that are operating within the city, then that would be the likely place to, to cover that.
This is really more of, I mean, it's, it's, it's a true bus system. I mean, you've probably seen them are getting stuck behind one on, on Beaufort Highway, but you know, they're, it's not a taxi per se. I mean, it's truly on off, small bus with a fare box kind of thing that is running up and down Beaufort Highway.
Yeah, and that would, you know, we have limousines and everything else, that, that is one, that is one ordinance that needs to be, be, be looked at and revised.
You're probably talking about the red bus line, I think it's called?
I think that's what it's called, yeah.
Yeah, it's, I, I think that falls under the Department of Transportation guidelines, and there's different requirements, laws and insurance carryovers between limousines and those types of bus services. It's very confusing, and we're trying to look into some of, some of that with the bus service. And this is a general question. You think it'd be counsel's desire, of course, one person can't speak for counsel, but would it be in that direction to regulate this, that, the smoking on these private lines?
Is that, is that the issue at hand? It's smoking on the?
I think that was the general, the general question about, does this apply to private lines as well?
Were there a number of other things that applied to, to public transport, a number of other ordinances, or were those taken out?
No, I think they're, they're
No, they're, they're in there. They haven't been removed as far as persons' actions at the MARTA stations and the like, and also the, I believe we were also covering the parking issues that were there too.
Fair evasion, et cetera.
Yeah.
I know it was out for a second, but Bates just confirmed that we're talking about banning smoking on private transport?
Well, it was just a general question. Would that particular code section apply? And it could or it could not be counsel's desire.
I'm against smoking and I don't smoke and I never have, but it's really not our decision. If a private company wants to have a bus or transport where they allow smoking, I think that's their, I don't, what do you think?
I, you know, we're, we're regulating it on public transit, but we're not regulating it on, on private transit. So is that, is that a conflict? I don't know. Or, or does?
I think there's a difference.
Or does the public transit already not allow smoking? I guess does MARTA?
They did not.
So, so, so we're?
Not even eating.
So we're essentially paralleling, we're paralleling their, their rules, so. I don't know, that, that was just a question.
Yeah, that was just a general question.
It was in Section 1625.
In Section 1626.
Where they talk about the transit.
And it just deals specifically to MARTA, correct? In our ordinance?
As it's written.
Yeah.
As it's written.
That's, that's my preference if you, if you, you know, I believe that MARTA does accept some public tax money and that they get a penny tax so they can be subject to these regulations. My preference is to allow private companies to be subject to the free market. So I don't think it's our place to regulate there.
For a smoke bus, like the fur bus?
A cigar. You might have a cigar aficionado, just couches, want to go up and down.
I think Bates is hitting the money right on the head. If we've got tax dollars invested and the public needs to have some type of guidance on it, if it's private, hey, God bless them.
They could offer a smoke bus, everybody could smoke, but if you did want to smoke, they would give you oxygen masks.
That's right.
And ride with your smoking.
Well, that's, that's flammable. You might have an explosion.
Like, like I mentioned at the last, I think what, what probably is as important is, and counsel handed a, a list of items that are not included that were in the DeKalb County 16. A couple of the items, I think it's still here, the noise ordinance was one that I, was it taken out? Did I remember?
No, it, it is not.
It's elsewhere. I believe we have, the, the noise ordinance is elsewhere in the
Elsewhere in the code?
In the code.
Well, it's in 16 in DeKalb, where is it elsewhere in ours? Where was it added to ours?
I think you're talking about the littering. We're not, our intention here is to deal with more of the criminal, kind of the criminal in nature code sections. My intention was not to amend the noise ordinance. So what we're really amending in Chapter 16 of DeKalb County, and I don't know if this is on your, in the caption, would be Articles 1 through Articles 5. You would leave the noise ordinance alone and you would actually, the clean indoor ordinance alone. I didn't want, those are two that deserve their own discussion, so.
So when it says not included, it's not included in this revision, but it still applies as a DeKalb County
Yeah, we, we still have the noise ordinance in effect.
Okay, I'm sorry. When I saw not included, it, I thought that it was being stripped out of our ordinance as we brought it over.
It's for Articles 1 through 5, which generally deal with the more criminal in nature code sections.
And, you know, something that I've heard from Ronnie Mayer quite often is the urban camping law, talking about having it. We already have that in our code. I know that's part of this code, but it, did we already have that on the books, an urban camping law? Do you know if that was already on there? Because it's not changed here.
What, what we brought over?
That's been added.
That's been added.
It was an add, so we'll have an urban camp, camping law.
You will. Yeah, it's in 1621.
Chief, are you comfortable with the, with this version, with this draft? Do you think it, it gives you the flexibility you need to?
This is one where we researched it and this was, I believe from Gwinnett County, we passed on to the City Attorneys and they fine tuned it for us.
Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Have we gone any further in addressing the other side of that camping law about the impact it's going to have on the people that we're going to be basically, that could be a, a byproduct of enforcing this? I'm talking about the homeless. Remember we talked about this last time? About what options are out there, what we can or should be doing as a city?
We have sites. We haven't, we haven't come up with a procedure, a policy yet on, on where we would relocate the people that we do find. But right now, we're currently trying to relocate them to different sites within the City of Atlanta that have open sites available.
A site would be housing accommodations, is that what it would be?
Shelters.
Shelters.
You know, it, it's unfortunate, right where most of the homeless problems that we have is right next to Salvation Army Building. Now, they provide showers and food, however, they do not provide sleeping facilities. So that's why we have a problem in the area we have because they have those amenities there and no place to stay really.
Have they been spoken to about this?
We, we tried once, well, we're still reaching out to them.
Yeah, just wondering if maybe there's a further commitment that can be made on their part to assist in this since they're obviously of that ilk.
We can seek, see if they have alternatives themselves, so.
Right. So what do we do to move forward on that? You've got some places you want to further investigate, I guess.
We have shelters located. We can reach out to the Salvation Army again. We, we tried a couple of times and they were closed unfortunately during some of that cold weather.
Because the alternative is to enforce this, you're just pushing them off into another area, basically?
As a last resort, you know, there's criminal activity involved with a lot of the homeless people too, and that's their choice. The people that really need assistance will assist, and the other people, they'll be charged criminally.
Marie, what do you think a call from you to the Director of Railway, Salvation Army might be about this issue? Might, might be helpful.
I, I agree with Joe and the Mayor on this. I, I think that Salvation Army is probably the best means of educating these people about what, what's going on, on this law and, and the fact that if we can figure out a solution that, that helps them, we'd be happy to do it, but I just don't think we have the knowledge that they have in dealing with these people.
Is there, is there state assistance available on issues like this? I mean, can we check with the Governor's Office?
Yeah, I can check. Let me check.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there has to be a larger base of resource available to communities like ours to handle this in your main manner.
Usually the, the assistance that would be available would either be like halfway houses or group homes or some kind of, of temporary shelter. Many of, of those kind of temporary shelters are affiliated with religious groups. But, yeah, I'm happy to check. Usually, you know, there are some funds through HUD, but that would be for the construction of a permanent facility where, you know, it could be a temporary location or one that could be tied to jobs training.
Well, those, those kind of programs I think would already be intact. We could hopefully maybe just
We used to have facilities and institutions, but they shut them all down in the 70s and 80s. I mean, because a lot of these folks are, have mental issues and, and the reason they're wandering around a lot of times because there's no place for them to go because there's no institutions anymore to help house them and treat them.
A lot of that was done through the Reagan administration when there were severe budget cuts.
It started in the 70s, I think.
Yeah, I know, but they, well.
Maybe under Carr.
Don't blame Reagan. That's getting touchy.
Yeah, but I appreciate your efforts in helping to, so we can get a better handle on this.
Excuse my confusion, but I finally found what I was looking for. It was Article 7, noise ordinance, and it's listed as not included here, but can't be inserted. And the reason I go back on this is the noise ordinance also contains the work hours for construction sites and, and I'm getting pummeled by that on, and I just want to make sure that, that those ordinances are still applicable
Yes.
So that we can control those activities.
Well, when, when the council takes, takes final action, it will say specifically that we're amending Articles 1 through 5. You actually have, I believe, that is a table of contents, I believe I handed you from DeKalb County, and I believe it would be Article 6, which, which we would not be amending. Now, that would be something that deserves, deserves a lot of discussion among councils before we amend that.
Okay. Tim, you gave us the option to, to consider a more in-depth alarm system or something of a much simpler nature, which you were actually?
In your, in your package is the more, I guess, complicated alarm system, ordinance. I have not given you the false alarm. I sent it to the chief, he looked at it, and he's approved of it. It's, it'll, it can fit on one or three quarters of a page, and it's more of just a simple, like I said, negligent alarm type scenario. There's no registration or anything. And I don't know if we have, I was discussing with the chief, I don't think we have the infrastructure to, in place to, to follow that ordinance, which I believe was brought over from Dunwoody.
I tend to agree with that. I mean, I, I think it's the nuisance alarms that personally, you know, because there was a lot of language which, which you stripped out, but it's still somewhat complicated.
It is complicated.
About permitting and also hearing officers and having to, having to come for, for hearings and those types of things. So I mean, that, it seems to be a little bit cumbersome as it's written, so.
And, and that's after I worked on it. I tried to make it, and I just really, it's real difficult. It calls for a civil, civil penalty scheme. So you, you're dealing, you have civil penalties versus criminal penalties. We have a municipal court, we need to run everything through municipal court. That's just the more efficient way to handle these matters. And again, the whole manner, the whole, the whole purpose, in my opinion, having done this on these false alarm ordinances, is just get the alarm fixed so we don't have to come back out. So.
I'm, I'm in favor of, of moving in that direction, of, of taking the, the more cumbersome one out and inserting the one that deals with what the chief has, has expressed as a concern. That's just a number of false alarms from a, from a single resident.
We just want to make sure that the security is not being inappropriately diverted to an area
Exactly.
For the same purpose, time after time after time. So let's just, I think we should do that, just address the problem for what it is. Keep it simple.
It's simply a resource issue, we just can't
Exactly.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Jim.
Any other questions on what I've, I'm certainly not around anymore, just feel free to shoot me any comments you may have.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just, I'm so close I can't read. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the ordinance to amend Chapter 14. This is our stream buffer ordinance. And I want to make this statement before, as Bennett and Susan are coming to the podium to address this. We have had a, a number of work sessions and a number of drafts and comments on this ordinance. And you recently received from Susan, and it's in your folder, this is the stream buffer ordinance comparison, version one, version two, DeKalb, and then the model ordinance. And I wanted to just highlight this point, especially for the record, because there has been some commentary and confusion by members of the public that, first of all, there is a, a thought out there that this is going to be adopted tonight. And as staff, we cannot make a statement whether a certain action is going to be taken by the mayor and council. That is up to the council to determine. So we can't say if somebody says, is it being voted on tonight? Or is, what's the council's vote going to be? I mean, we, we, we can't make those kind of statements.
Or is it going to be voted to adopt?
Right, exactly. And, and what we can say is that what staff is looking for in, in terms of direction, and that is, we've had a number of meetings concerning this. There've been a number of drafts circulated that you all have shared and commented on. There've been meetings where Bennett has made presentations, starting with the model ordinance for the state and what ARC is doing and what the region is doing. And Mr. Iyer has, you know, had comments because he's also reviewed a number of ordinances in, in the metro areas. So all of that together, you know, created different versions. And for the purpose of the public and, and their desire to, to be informed, if you'll recall at our last meeting, we talked about, you know, making further refinements with the input that came from council. This comparison chart has now been prepared for all of you for this purpose. One, to give you a, a tracking of what's, what has occurred since the first presentation of a model ordinance and, and the refinements that have occurred thus far. But secondly, and most importantly, is to get a consensus by the council so that we can do what we said we were going to do at the previous meeting, and that was to take the final comments, include those in what we would call the final draft, post that for the public to comment on, to review, and have that posted either for two weeks or as much as 30 days, and then to circle back around, have it placed on the agenda so that the public can come and speak to this item. It is not a public hearing item where it requires, you know, two readings and it has to be advertised, but because there has been so much commentary on it, I think it's important that we treat it as if it is a public hearing item. And it is our desire as staff today to get direction from you all as to what is the final version so that we can move forward, post this for comments and engagement by the public, and then put it on an agenda for consideration of action by the, the mayor and council. So I hope that dispels some of the confusion from the public. Again, we cannot predict, nor would we ever predict, how a council will act or react on a, on a matter that's on their agenda, and nor would we ever predict how they would vote, should it come to that. That is certainly up for you all. But we can recommend, in this particular instance, that the public would deserve, and you all agreed to this in your last meeting, that whatever final version is, that this would be posted to allow the public to review and, and comment, and that we would place it on an agenda where they could come to the podium, we would treat it as if it's a public hearing item. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Cannon and Bennett.
Well, I think Marie said it best. However, in your package, you have the red lined copy of the changes. You have a chart that's color coded that shows the difference between what was changed and what was not changed from version two and version three. What you have before you currently is version three. The springboard from that was the version two item in the work session and the, what we surmised were the requested changes. Bennett is going to come before you and explain the evolution of where we were and where we are, and what the difference in the existing code is, and how we move forward with this current draft before you. And then we would need to solicit from you as to whether or not additional changes are needed. He also has, has a rough sketch on the, on the wall here to identify for you the difference between the 2550 and 75 and what it means now, and how it is to be implemented, and what the variance process is. So Bennett?
My thought would be that we could start using the, what we call version two, which was the ordinance that we discussed at the last work session as a frame of reference, if that seemed appropriate to you. In your packet, there is a version three in which there's red lines on it that illustrate the changes from that version two that we discussed at the last work session. And those changes appear on three pages. Pages three, pages the last work session. And those changes appear on three pages, pages 3, 8, and 9. And I'll pause if need be. My thought would be that might be the easiest way to see what changes were made from the last work session based upon your input.
Just two quick questions. One is, explain to me the difference between a green block and a yellow block?
And on that chart, the green block is intended...
And then, before we get there, for members of the public, these are public documents. Do we have a copy of any of these that the public can see if we're discussing this, or is that...
We do have extra copies.
We do have extra copies. All right. So, if the public wanted to see this, what's green and what's yellow, they could see it?
Yes. And the intent was for the green to reflect areas where there were no changes made from the version 2 from the last work session, and the yellow would be reflective of where a change was made. But there really are only three changes from the previous version. One change is that impervious cover will not include slatted decks, whereas the previous version used the term wooden. But the previous version did state that wooden decks would not be considered impervious. That is elevated wooden decks, elevated slatted decks. Another adjustment in the current version, version number 3, is that the staff will mail notifications instead of the applicant for variances.
What is staff's preference on that? Mail or have applicant mail?
Let us mail.
Okay.
No, we discussed this last time.
Is there any kind of cost burden?
We discussed the confusion over that, and so we felt, based on what you were saying, that we probably should just keep it with us.
You know, I've done it both ways, and there is time and money involved because staff prepares a letter and they mail a letter. And, you know, what I'm used to is staff will give me a list of, here's who you need to mail to.
I think the intent of that was so we don't have meetings like this, and somebody comes out of the audience and says, well, I never got a letter. I mean, and I live two doors down. And staff has got, you know, we have the information. You want to do 500, 1200 foot from a point of reference, make your circle. We know every address that it needs to go to. I think it's maybe a little bit more cumbersome, maybe a little bit more expensive, but I think it ensures that we communicate to the parties that need to be communicated to.
But there are ways to address that also. I mean, you can require a proof of mailing, which is sort of one step below certified?
We had this conversation in the work session, so based on this feedback, we left it as a staff function.
Okay.
And then the agreement was 500 feet.
Okay.
Just as a...
That's fine. There is a burden on the city, and that's the reason why I asked what...
Yeah. I mean, I think that it's reasonable to ask developers asking for this variance to pay for that cost if it's significant. I think we, you know, something to consider. If the burden's being put on the city for the benefit of a developer in an application of a variance, I think they should pay for that.
Well, and that's done in other cities as practice. You know, any additional work that is done in order, I mean, as part of the application fee, and, you know, that could be included as well. I mean, there's an advertising fee. There is the cost of the sign, and then there's the cost of the mailings.
I guess the only question I have, and I may be confused, is where we left it, was that we talked about some criteria being inserted for approval of the variance, similar to the standards that were included that are in the, you know, the regular, a normal variance, there's a list of four or five criteria, either by reference or by insertion. We were going to include similar language in this for these variances. And again, I'm just looking at my notes from the last meeting, and I'm not sure what the final...
If you take a look on your ordinance, page 10.
There it is. Oh, there it is, okay.
There's a list of what factors will be considered in considering a variance.
I see it now. Thank you.
And that was in, just in case there's any confusion, that was in the so-called version 2 that we talked about the last work session. That's not a change. So, the other change, the third item...
I mentioned 2.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know what the, it was for both a variance and administrative variance. And I don't know if that needs to be clarified. Here it says for any variance request. I don't know if we need to insert or administrative variance, or I'm not sure how they're defined in the ordinance.
Yeah, that paragraph is under a heading that refers to any variance request.
Okay.
So, I believe that would be covered for both an administrative and a zoning board of appeals.
That's correct. And also within the, there are also standards in which, that have to be followed within the, either the administrative or the ZVA requests. Also, you know, for example, you go to Section 5 of the administrative variance procedures on page 9. That really outlines the standards in which that can be granted. So...
Thank you for the clarification. I was trying to interpret my notes and where we were in the... Okay, thank you.
And the third change compared to our last meeting, related to the minimum standards of mitigation for variances. In the version 2, there is a specific minimum quantifiable standard of mitigation performance for stormwater management and water quality treatment for all variances. But your consensus, as we interpreted it, was for that to be applied to the variances that require a zoning board of appeals hearing, but to relax that for the administrative variances. Administrative variances being those variances that involve disturbance only in the outer 25 feet. And in that case, the requirement for mitigation is that there is mitigation, but that the requirement is more vague in ways, not as specific. It's simply that the mitigation measures proposed shall be at least as protective of the stream as the conditions that existed prior to whatever development was proposed. And that would allow each case to be judged on its own merits with regard to administrative variances.
Yeah, the administrative variance applies only to clearing and grading in the outer 25 feet. It does not apply to impervious material. So, the thought was, you know, that if somebody wants to encroach in that with a little bit of grading, that that was, that minimum standard was a pretty heavy burden to go back and capture the entire property and have them do that for just a little bit of grading. But for any impervious encroachment in the entire 75 feet, the 50 feet or the 25-foot setback, they will have to go back. And there is a higher standard. They will have to go back and capture the whole site. So, I think this makes sense for, in light of what the model ordinance is doing with that outer 25-foot setback.
The only question I have...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor.
The difference is the variance for disturbance, but we're taking the, if you're putting anything like a driveway or some concrete down, then there's no administrative variance. Whereas before, it all was a ZVA? And this was just for impervious to the ZVA?
No, there was the administrative variance, but it had the same minimum requirements for both a ZVA variance and an administrative variance. What we're doing is we're taking that minimum standard out for the administrative variance and inserting this language that leaves it to staff's discretion to determine what is an equal, you know, if you're taking it out, what do you need to put back in, rather than saying, if you take it out, you have to put this back in. Does that make sense?
Yes. And I feel it may be important to highlight what I think are three major elements of this so-called version 3 ordinance that might categorize it as making this ordinance distinctive for Brookhaven compared to ordinances you might see in other communities. One is that a variance is required for any disturbance within 75 feet, other than what's grandfathered or exempted. Some ordinances will allow land disturbance in the outer 25 feet without having to get a variance, as long as there's no impervious surface installed. This ordinance also stipulates that no variance shall be granted within 35 feet of the stream unless the state EPD also issues a variance for activities within the 25-feet state buffer.
What was your thought about that? I know you had mentioned that last time.
In my cynical view of how developers sometimes may operate, not all developers, somebody may decide, well, I'm going to apply for a state variance just so I can get within 35 feet. You know, that may or may not happen. It's a judgment call from whoever, you know, is the community officials, the council, to determine, do we want that additional measure of protection along the streams? Again, I would say every case has its unique characteristics. Here in Brookhaven, you have probably over a third of the parcels in the city are touched by stream buffers. In the most severe cases, perhaps the entire parcel is covered by the buffer, and in the less severe cases, it may just skirt the edge of a parcel. Certainly, there are houses and driveways and patios that are within 75 feet. So, when you think of that, this may create some unusual hardships for the owner of a property on a case-by-case basis.
The 35 feet really was more, was much my suggestion. I think I saw it in a number of other ordinances. And my thought was this, it was sort of twofold. One is that we currently do not allow anything within 50 feet of a stream, our current ordinance. So, this allowed a little bit of extra protection, rather than going all the way to 25. We stopped at 35. And my rationale for that is with the combination of a 35-foot stream buffer plus the minimum standards that we now have included for mitigation, that more or less equals the 50 feet that we currently have. So, it was a way of trying to keep something that was similar to what we have, but still give some additional flexibility, relying on them to go 15 feet closer to the creek than our current ordinance allows. And in exchange for that, you're going to give us some additional stormwater and water quality improvements.
So, if it creates a bunch of unusual cases, I guess we'll have to revisit it. But you think that's a wise course? I want your opinion.
I guess my opinion, independent of anybody else's, would be that it would, I don't think it's necessary to put that item in the ordinance. I think that the stream buffer ordinance provides a high level of protection as it is without it. But if it's the will of the council, it provides an additional level of protection.
But do you think it's cumbersome? I mean, do you strongly feel that way about it, or is it just kind of a preference or a...
I'd call it a preference. What it does, it eliminates the ability of a board to obviously grant a variance within 35 feet regardless of the circumstances, unless the state grants a variance, even if there's a hardship in this case, unless it's otherwise grandfathered or exempted. The way I interpret that, I don't know if Tom would agree on that, but even if there's a hardship, variance cannot be granted.
There's a force majeure exception, but that's an act of God. It doesn't fall within the hardship exception for granting the variances as far as the impervious buffers in there.
There's also an exception for repairing or replacing existing...
Or replacing or rebuilding the grandfathered.
Yeah, the grandfathered items.
And that, I believe, is the grandfather provision. Yeah, redevelopment or replacement of existing impervious areas within the outer 25 feet is grandfathered in the ordinance. So, if that location, it would not be grandfathered.
It sounds like your explanation was different than what Jim's explanation of was. Not that you shouldn't...
Explanation of...
Well, let me, let me, if the state says, okay, then it's not 35 feet, it's 25 feet. If a person wishes to, if it's already there within that 10 feet, and a person wants to rehabilitate or reconstruct within that footprint, it's okay. Or if there's some act of God or something that just happens, then it's okay.
I mean, I have a station for you, but you can't explain it. No, I mean, you know, I will say that the 35 feet was my suggestion, and it's in there, again, trying to maintain some semblance of equality to what we currently have. So...
And he's kind of saying it's really, could have, not strongly, obviously. He's not trying to be, you know, we just want your opinion. You're giving us your opinion, that it might cause some issues or make some undo, some hardships that are strange. But what is your response to that?
You know, I think we've had, we've seen variances that range from a few feet to all the way down to 25 feet. So, I think each case is going to be, is going to be particular. I think, you know, personally, I think in most cases, the 10 feet is not going to make that much of a difference. You know, it's either going to be all or none. To come within 35 feet of a stream, it may mean that they're going to have to pick a different house design that's not as deep or is not as wide as what they originally envisioned. So, you know, I think there are choices out there that can mitigate that, rather than just coming in and asking for the full 25 or down to the 25 feet.
My concern primarily would be with a property that is already developed where perhaps a property owner is not looking at redeveloping, but maybe making a minor improvement to their property that would require a variance. But by the nature of what's already there, the house may be even partly within the 25-foot buffer. This might create a situation for that property owner that is very difficult. And I think where I'm getting to is we need to look at the wording of this and see if the grandfathering and the exemptions cover that. And I'm not sure that it does the way it's currently written.
You're saying a structure that's already within the 25-foot, if there was a renovation or some...
I think of the cases where a homeowner may want to add a deck, a sunroom, or something like that. And it may be the will of the community, whether it's Brookhaven or the community, that don't want that to happen within 35 feet. But there are going to be cases in which there are existing developments, existing houses that may have been there 40, 50 years that encroach within 25 feet of a creek. Certainly, I'm sure that exists in Brookhaven.
If I can state this in another way, for new lots, new developments, then your impervious cover is going to be, will not get closer than 35 or feet to the creek. So, that's really what it is. For existing structures that are already within that 10 feet, then it's okay. Now, if you are expanding, need to expand into that additional 10 feet, then it would be covered, but you could not do that.
What if you're expanding parallel rather than into it more? So, you're not going further closer, but you're going to the side?
Oh, you're already in it?
Yes.
No.
You would not be allowed to do that?
No, you'd be, you'd be increasing the encroachment.
Right. And I think that's where it would, it would come up, an existing house.
Right, okay.
Another feature of the ordinance that I think would make Brookhaven distinctive as presented is the specific mitigation requirement for those variances that require a zoning board of appeal approval, that when there is an application for a variance, and it does have to go to the zoning board of appeals, which means that impervious surface is proposed within 75 feet, or land disturbance is proposed either with or without impervious surface within 50 feet, then it goes to zoning board of appeals. And then, on that property, the normal standards for stormwater management, the form of detention and treatment of water quality, water quality volume is required. And it's required, you might call it retroactively, it's required to be treated for all the impervious surfaces on the property, whether those surfaces are in or out of the buffer. And that would be a feature that I think would be unique to this ordinance compared to most other ordinances.
Well, that certainly speaks to a lot of the concerns that I've gotten from residents about, you know, when you have infill development, typically you're getting larger houses, tearing down smaller, older houses, and you're getting larger houses. And there is a perception that we've got a lot more stormwater runoff. And it's, you know, when it hits, you know, until this, this portion kind of came into this... ordinance, we really weren't regulating single-family home stormwater mitigation for runoff, is my understanding, right? But now it would be.
Well, it would be addressed when the replacement or installation of impervious cover would be 5,000 square feet or more, but there'd be many cases in which there'd be infill redevelopment that doesn't, that wouldn't meet that standard. So in this case, if a stream buffer variance is applied for and issued, then that mitigatory measure is required for the entire property.
Right.
And as you know, there's significant areas within the city of Brookhaven in which the infrastructure is old, and would, you know, if you were to design the city now and put in the infrastructure, what you put in now would be much more extensive than what is in place. So this would be a way of addressing that to the extent that a buffer, a buffer variance is applied for.
Okay.
And that's a lot of reason why I inserted that, because I was getting the same emails that you were, and there were sort of three things. One was stormwater, stormwater water quality and tree removal, and I think that, that minimum mitigation that was inserted addresses each one of those in a very specific way. So we can, again, it goes back to that, trying to make sure that the new ordinance is reasonably close, providing the same protection that the current ordinance does, that we have in place.
Let's put it out to the public.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I think that's, that's our next step, is to take this ordinance, and I don't know that we're voting on it, take this ordinance and publish it, and see if we can get any comments from, from the residents.
So Bennett, just one question, please. You made a comment at the very beginning to Bates, that yellow was a definition of a change from two to three.
Yes.
Okay. So if I look on this, under the mitigation requirements, it's yellow under two, does that mean that we move to three on this? Because I thought the description you just gave on this was the yellow.
The change with regard to mitigation requirements is that in the version two that we discussed at the last work session, that mitigation standard, the way that ordinance was written, would be required for all variances.
I got you.
In this version, only on the ones that go to the zoning board of appeals, not for the administrative variances.
Got you.
Which, again, the administrative, just to be clear, is only applicable if the proposal is for land disturbance only, without impervious surface installation in the outer 25 feet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah.
Excellent work.
Thank you.
This was a really good effort.
Thank you.
With that, with that now reviewed, are you all of the consensus that you'd like to move this forward and make this available to the public? Okay. Can you give me some direction? Do you want to have this reviewed under a two-week period and have it placed back on your agenda for March the 25th? Or do you want it displayed and available for comment for a month, and that would then put it back on the April 8th council agenda?
When would you plan to do your, your public hearing on this?
Well, it's not a public hearing, but we would place it to allow for public comment as a, an item.
Okay, so it would be at council, it would be at council meeting?
Yes, correct. Now...
We'd put it on the website.
Tomorrow.
Right. I'd like to go the two-week route, and then we can decide at public comment whether we want to defer it another, you know, but let's go ahead and get it moving through the process so that we give, you know, 10 days of public comment or, you know, close it sometime before...
Well, I'd like to close it before the next meeting so we can assemble all of those comments and have those shared with you all. So what we could do is we could, we could close, we could close the comments by close of business on the 21st, but we would not be able to get that to you until Monday or Tuesday of your meeting week. So just to give staff time to do that. So that gives more time to the public to review.
Well, you know, if you're getting a lot of your responses initially, maybe you could just feed us some of the responses so we can stay averse on what's going on instead of just being cold on it with just a day or so to act.
Okay, well, why don't we do this, a weekly response?
There you go.
Okay, that work?
I love it.
We'll post it tomorrow, that's the 12th. We'll see what kind of comments we receive. You know, I'll get with community development on how that gets posted, of course, with IT, and then, you know, we'll track that. I'm sure there might even be comments on Facebook and...
How we let people know that it's up, I mean...
Can we get Dana to do a media blast like we did with the snowstorm?
Right, we're going to do that.
Let everybody know that we've, we've got this on position now.
We'll do that, and then we'll get it posted immediately so we can start soliciting comments. In fact, you know, what we might do, that's only three days, let's wait till Monday to let you know what, what it's looking like out there, and then we'll follow up towards the end of the week and then give you a posting that, anything new that's come in as of close of business on Friday, you'll get that into your packets, or you'll get that handed out to you.
I have a question about, just can you give us a little civics lesson on, or Susan could help with this, too. On agendas, when we're considering a vote on something, does it say for consideration at the top typically, or does it say, what is the wording?
Usually...
Final draft?
Well, it could, and it's done different ways.
How do we typically do it?
Well, the way we're doing is we just list the item, whether it's an ordinance or what. We could say consideration of an ordinance and then list it as ORD, blah, blah, you know, the numbers.
For a vote.
No, consideration of, because your consideration could be to take action, to vote, to defer it, to...
Doesn't limit our, doesn't limit our options.
Yeah, I know, but that kind of, that kind of gets us back to where, I mean, I, we know, and folks who have been coming know that, you know, if something's on the agenda, does it mean we're going to be voting to approve it that night?
Correct, correct.
But like, this was distinguished in my mind on, from the other items on the agenda under new business, and it just said ordinance, and it just says what the ordinance would do. And then the next thing, you know, you've got an approval of intergovernmental agreement, authorization, intercontract, authorization, authorization, so you're doing...
Why don't we do it this way, if I can suggest, consideration of approval. That way, if you consider otherwise, you have that ability. I just don't want to lock you in that there is an expectation that you may not be willing to fulfill.
Current ordinance under consideration for approval.
Yeah, I think, well, that, if we do it in the manner of consideration for approval, that could capture our resolutions, that captures our contracts, that captures ordinances or any other action that you would take.
Right.
So we can say consideration for approval and then list the...
But this item has been on the same way in the agenda for the past month, and it's, you know, deferred, and we talked about it last meeting about, we're going to have a public hearing, and the public will be able to comment on the draft that we finally get.
Correct.
So if people weren't in tune to that, maybe they would get confused and think that, you know...
Yeah, I would like to recommend that when Dana does her email blast on this, that a chronology of the history of this, not, you know, just simple, how we've gone through our phases.
You want to go all the way back to December when we imposed a moratorium?
Just a one-liner, if you want, if you want, just a moratorium set, council considers version one, version two, version three, and now this is version four, opening it up for publication and public review. Let them know, you know, this didn't happen last week or two weeks ago.
Yeah, people have been following, you know, we've been working on getting a draft for the public review, but until we can get a draft, there's really nothing for the, it just confuses people if we have seven drafts, which one's the one? So this is the logical process.
Right, exactly. Well, part of that was, and we had it, as we do on any matter that's upcoming, that goes on the work session agenda, and then we get direction to place it on a council agenda. And then when it reached council, there was still a desire to continue to review it and make comments, and there were meetings with staff. So once it hit that agenda, it stays on that agenda until it's dispensed with. So maybe what we start doing is when it's on a work session, you know, we keep it on the work session agenda before we ever place it on the council's agenda for, when everyone's comfortable to place it on that agenda, when you're, when you believe you're ready to make a, to make a determination. Is that acceptable?
We had this, the first round, when it was even being put on the agenda, there was, oh, they're going to do a, you know, and that was six weeks ago.
Right.
Or eight weeks ago.
Yeah.
One last question. Do we have anything in the pipeline that is pending as far as stream buffer?
We have one residual case that was bound over in the ZBA, so it falls under the existing ordinance. We have a case that just came in, so it would fall under the existing ordinance, and I believe we have an admin, but that's it. We don't have several lined up.
So we're not unduly delaying projects?
No, we're not.
Okay, excellent.
But if I may, you might want to consider that should you, with what we're doing now, placing it on there, when this item gets to you on the council's agenda tonight, you might want to consider a moratorium until this is fully adopted.
For two weeks.
Yeah, if you're looking at the two weeks.
So you think there may be a land rush if they read the, or maybe a rush of applications?
Well, I mean, if anybody files for a variance, they're filing under our current ordinance, they're not filing under what's proposed because it hasn't been adopted yet.
Most of what I see, I mean, I guess all of it, seems to be a win-win for both sides on there.
Yeah, I think it's a very good ordinance. It's just, do you want to confuse the public further? I mean, at some point, you need to stop and say, this is what we're dealing with, or do you take the chance that somebody could file, they could file an administrative variance too, under the current ordinance?
Right.
Something to consider.
That's good advice.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, what's next? Number three. Am I, can you all hear me? Am I on?
There's something wrong with that microphone or that channel.
Okay, all right. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the, and consideration of approval of an intergovernmental agreement for the provision of 911 emergency communication services. This is going with Chatcom. If you'll look in your folders, please, there has been a letter that we received from the authority, Chatcom authority, the chairman of the authority, Wendell Willard, agreeing to allow Brookhaven to come in as a subscriber. Remember, there is an authority that has been created to perform and provide 911 emergency services. So that authority is made up by the city of Sandy Springs and the city of Johns Creek, who sit on the authorities' board. Subscribers, we had a choice, we could come in as a subscriber, or we could come in as an equity partner and a member of the authority. There was a little bit more money involved in that. We've had a couple of work sessions on the merits of leaving the county's 911 service and going to Chatcom. So in those meetings, we've had citizens attend, make comments on that. But I do have tonight, our chief, of course, is here to speak to this because there has been a, some discussion regarding the one-button transfer for fire and emergency rescue. Also, Mr. Joe Esty, who is here, who's the executive director for the authority or for the 911 services. So I have both of them here to, to present to you with what is before you. I will tell you, just as you're listening to them, as you're listening to them...
Can we ask Joe one question first, then have chief come up?
Absolutely. Yeah. Chief might just want to sit over there so it's not a distance for him to get up. The timeframe in which to make this transfer does take a number of months. I had, and again, in my meeting yesterday with the county manager, we talked about what an earliest date would be and what the outside date would be. So we're looking at August 1 as the early date, no earlier than, and then no later than September 30. So sometime between August 1 and September 30, that switch could be made, all the transfer, all of the information necessary, and also necessary time for DeKalb County to make some decisions regarding how they now adjust with a lesser number of phones to answer.
Okay. Joe, would you come up for one second?
Sure.
This is Joe Esty, the general manager.
Well, I'm actually managing director for the ISP corporation and have some overarching operational responsibilities for, for Chatcom.
The quick question I had before the chief presents is just the software fix that Dunwoody's working on, do you know what happened with that?
They've continued to test, it's not gone particularly well, and they're still in a development stage. And actually, the vendors are going back to, to working out some issues and problems. So we've not, we've not had what we would consider to be final testing, and just have not had enough success to be able to do that. So continues to be under development.
Thank you.
Is this, is this in reference to the third party taking the two different bases?
Well, there's two vendors that are operating, because there's two CAD systems, there's a CAD system at Chatcom and one in, in DeKalb, and it's a translation issue to take information that we would, we would record from the phone call and then transfer that to, to DeKalb. So it's a translation issue and lots of ones and zeros in terms of make that work on a, through across a data circuit.
If they don't finish soon, Google's just going to do it for free.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm here mainly for, for questions, but the thing I'd like to just bring up is there's a lot of talk about the one-button transfer versus this interface that's set up. I think we mentioned before, DeKalb currently has Interact as a CAD vendor, they're in the process, there's RFPs out, where they're going to be replacing it. You know, it, to me, it'd be kind of foolish to waste money on putting something in where we might end up with another CAD vendor and having to spend all this money all over again. Not to say it's going to work that well, anyway. I did some research, as far as, we were talking about 911 calls, I give you some instances where the one-button transfer is a national standard, as we brought up before. If cell towers are overloaded, say you end up with a bad accident on an 85 or Peachtree or Beaufort Highway, those calls might be routed to Atlanta, Clayton County, Fulton County, it could go anywhere. That's a one-button transfer. Dorville has their own communication center, Shambly has their own communication center with their own police departments that they dispatch, but they still use the CAD fire department. It's a one-button transfer. It's worked well, you know, there's going to be glitches in any kind of radio system you have, but I think this is a national standard, and I think, you know, it's, it's well worth it. What I'm looking at is 90% of the calls, you know, Mr. Ross brought up, 90, 10% of the calls are life, life-threatening or life, you know, life-threatening calls. Well, out of that 10%, probably only 3% is actually life-threatening. A lot of them might be garbage can fires or, just like the police department, 90% of our calls, out of that 90%, maybe 10% are, are life-threatening calls. Just something to keep in, in mind. The other thing I did check on was Fat Pot, which Mr. Ross, ex-councilman from Dunwoody, brought up. We did check into that. It is a feasible system, maybe somewhere down the road, but it's still in the testing stages. I actually checked with some departments in Illinois and California that are currently using it, and they're not fully using it yet, so...
Did you see, get a price on that, or roughly?
He said it would depend anywhere on, on the vendors that you're interfacing that system with. It could go anywhere from $10,000 to 100, actually, he said 200,000.
So it's basically, it's, there's an issue where we, with 10% of the calls, that it's, you might have to repeat information twice, is basically what the issue is.
Right.
And of those, you say 3% or, or 3% of total calls are...
And to be honest with you, as, as Mr. Esty said before, I would much sooner have a human person on that phone, given the comfort to that person that needs that life-threatening assistance right away, rather than, you know, having a transfer over a computer where the person doesn't know what's going on.
And the...
And Chatcom actually will provide the EMD service if the cab won't answer the phone.
Okay. What's EMD?
That's emergency medical dispatching, which gives the person, say if somebody's having a heart attack, the, the dispatcher's actually relay information on how to perform CPR or what steps to take.
All right, did, and there was also the issue on that one call that Mr. Councilman, former Councilman Ross, brought up, that the Dunwoody Police don't necessarily go to all calls like that with, with, as they're being made, or the fire would go to. Did you, you're aware of that issue?
We're kind of under the same situation right now. The cab will advise us if there's a fire call. Sometimes, sometimes we're not dispatched until after, maybe rescue gets there and they think something's unusual or it needs police response. But any type of emergency calls, like we've had domestics where there might be weapons involved, suicides, things like that, we're notified right away.
Not specifically about the kind of call that was being handled that we heard, the lady was having trouble breathing.
Right.
Would, would our police be dispatched on something like that?
They'd be made aware, and depending on the calls for service going on at the time, generally, we would respond on something like that. And I believe Dunwoody would also respond on it, but that was during that ice storm, if I remember right.
I just want a clarification there. There's actually two methods by which, I mean, one of the things that we would sit down with, with the chief, and, and we would determine, we would actually list out all the calls, and, and he could choose, pick and choose the ones that he wanted to respond to. pick and choose the ones that he wanted to respond on. But we would, in the case that Mr. Ross brought up, it was a bit of a point of distinction. His officer was notified of the call and the location of the call. He was not technically dispatched, but he was aware of the call and he chose not to respond. So they've since changed their policy. They're not dispatched on all calls. That's certainly an option that we could do in Brookhaven, but the Chief would also, we could configure the CAD so that he could pick on the number of calls that he wanted to be dispatched on. But in any case, they would be advised of calls in their area that EMS or fire would be responding to. That's a regular notification.
Right. Obviously, the 911 system we have right now is far from perfect, obviously. So in my mind, knowing, you know, we've been informed of some of the potential issues. There are smaller percentage of them. So in my mind, we have to do sort of a cost-benefit analysis, for lack of a better term. What is the benefit of changing from 911 to DeKalb County to going with Chatcom in your mind?
Safety of officers, the availability and the responsiveness when the calls come in. We receive both the time elements as far as calls go, from answering to dispatching, all those types of things from both the cab and Chatcom. And Chatcom far outweighs what the cab is able to do.
Yeah, performs. Do you have any statistics on that or Joe?
Well, it's, I mean, we have limited data in order to be able to, and I don't, I don't see what the response is from the cab. We provide on a monthly basis every statistical number that the Chief wants in terms of how quickly that call is answered. We answer our calls 90% of the time or higher within 10 seconds. We process those calls in 60 seconds or less for all the high priority calls. So we provide that, that level of information every month, as well as looking at any specific call. If any of you get a call about a delayed response, we can provide, at least to the point before DeKalb, exactly what happened to that call, what time it was answered, how quickly it was answered, where it went.
All right, so Chief, what problems that you're experiencing now do you hope will be in at least some way ameliorated by switching to 911 Chatcom as opposed to?
Well, one of the big benefits right now is they have a similar CAD system. All the departments that are part of Chatcom have a similar CAD system. We'll be able to document and receive the information over our computers and actually look at reports a lot quicker than through DeKalb. Currently, if an alarm call comes in or we want to find out about responsiveness by our officers or whatever, we have to call up and wait for a report from DeKalb to get that information. Whereas Chatcom, anyone at their desk or from their car, we'd be able to see the status of the officers right away.
Do you think that by switching to Chatcom, that your average response time would be significantly improved? And I mean by significant, it can be as little as 30 seconds or 45 seconds. Do you think that?
I think it'll be improved by a lot more than that. I provided the City Manager with a report, and I think you've got copies of showing where we've had delayed responses, anywhere from eight minutes on a bank robbery to over 30 minutes on a burglar alarm.
So to you, that's kind of an unacceptable situation.
Right.
And you want to, you seek to improve that situation.
Right.
And Chatcom 911 is a way you think that that could possibly be accomplished?
Right, we've met with the cab supervisors and they've been very helpful with us. It's just, I think they don't have enough dispatchers. You know, one of the other things that they have is the cab put us on their system with no additional help or work to help us out joining the system. We have a lot more officers than DeKalb actually had in the city limits of Brookhaven, whereas Chatcom is actually putting in two more 911 trunk lines, which will, you know, bring the availability of answering those calls.
What I'm trying to avoid here is making decisions based on the small exception rather than the general rule. And, you know, we would be doing this, recognizing that there would be a small percentage of calls that might be in more of a delay. But the benefit we would get would be a much larger volume of calls that we've been taking. The response times would be vastly improved.
The response times will be vastly improved. And to be honest with you, what I'm looking at is the safety of the officers. I've got, I think, 64 complaints from officers as far as on documentation, as far as where their location is when they call out of the car.
Did you say you had 64?
I believe it was 64.
You're talking about, you've had?
Officers complaining about.
The 911?
Yeah.
Our officers?
Yes.
Those complaints, when you talk about safety of officers, how does, what does Chatcom offer that DeKalb doesn't currently offer with regard to safety of the officers?
Well, with Chatcom, with the current system we have, the CAD system, the officers could actually sign out. Chatcom, checking with the other agencies that are involved with Chatcom, their dispatchers immediately put, and they actually check after so many minutes, the status of the officer. Whereas the cab, a couple of times, officers got out of the cars and we had no idea where they were at.
Oh, so you're like, somebody's getting to investigate something, you don't know if the officer's been.
Right.
Because I got you.
Another, another point that I would say that is a difference is, Brookhaven Police Department already owns the equipment. We would install an AVL in all of their cars.
We don't know AVL.
Automatic Vehicle Location System, so that the Brookhaven dispatcher sitting in Chatcom would have a visual representation of the map and know where the units are, know how close they are to where the complaint is, and be able to track officers and see where they were within the city at any time. And then there's also a track that can show where the officer has been and can track them. So if there's ever assisted, an incident where the officer now cannot, you know, can't reply and has gone silent on the radio, we'll know exactly where they are through the mapping system and the vehicle locator in the car.
Actually, the AVL is already in the car. Joe probably doesn't know that, but it's in the vehicle already. It's just that the cab didn't have the resources or they don't have their connection on their end to be able to use it.
So we were able to utilize some equipment we hadn't been able to utilize? Okay. That makes sense. More questions?
Joe, are you aware of what the RFP is that the cab put out?
My understanding is there's an RFP that has been released, but I don't believe it's been acted on in any way yet, so.
Yes, I didn't catch that.
I don't believe that there's been any action taken on the RFP. It's been released on the street.
Right.
But I don't believe that they've had any hearings or done anything with the actual RFP.
The purpose of the RFP, though, is for what?
For a new CAD system.
So it's a new CAD system, not an updated version of what they have now?
That's correct.
Do, my real question is, though, do you see this as being potentially advantageous to us in communicating, especially when it comes to EMS? Is this going to benefit us? Because that's always been an issue.
Well, I mean, I will tell you that there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion about quicker and discussion from Dunwoody about speeding those calls up and that a CAD-to-CAD interface is somehow better. It's just, it's really different. In some cases, you can make a case for it being a shorter amount of time in terms of questions maybe being asked twice instead of four times. But I'll tell you from personal experience, there are a lot of integrated centralized 911 call centers where the standard is to one-button transfer the call. A center, and I'll give you a couple of examples, New Hampshire and Rhode Island both have a central repository where all 911 calls for the state appear. And from that point, all the calls are transferred to the local jurisdiction for dispatch. So it's not like this is a, this is a one-off or some kind of a jury-rigged operation to handle calls. The one-button transfer and the call transfer from a primary piece app to a secondary piece app is really an industry standard and it's used nationally a lot and quite frequently. So it's not like this is something that there's a dramatic delay or problem with. This is a, this is a solid solution that a lot of jurisdictions use. And again, you know, in looking at this, the advantages of the transfer is, is that DeKalb will have that caller and be able to triage that caller, understand what is being, what situations may change, get additional information and be able to talk to that caller. And in the CAD-to-CAD interface, it's a data transfer and they're never going to speak to that individual. And all, everything else is going to have to take place by phone call between Chatcom and DeKalb and, or typing into a screen and then transferring that information.
A question for Marie on the contract. So we know the amount for our subscription. What's, do we know the offer on the amount for equity? Did they make that offer?
Well, the equipment is ours.
Well, but as an equity partner in Chatcom?
Yes, it's much greater than this.
Two, three times, five times?
Well, I'd say, and Joe can help me out on this, but it's probably two or three times or maybe even more.
Yeah, that would have to be, I mean, the Authority basically had, the two cities had laid out the capital expenditure to fit out the building and buy the technology. And so it's a, you know, and I think they worked from a formula of percentage, estimated percentage of what the activity was, and then going back to that original number and recovering that equity to sort of, you know, satisfy the aspect of becoming a partner of the.
Is that a one-time fee or is it annual? How does that work?
I believe it's a one-time fee.
So does that impact what the, what the following, what the subsequent year's fees would be? I mean, are you still looking at these type of yearly fees or is it lower? I mean, what's the payback on it?
It'd have to be lower.
I don't want to make that assumption.
It could be lower, but before we get too far down the road on that, I would like to.
I'm trying to use the other microphone.
Oh.
Trying to distract you.
Okay. One of the things that gives us an advantage of being a subscriber is that we own this equipment. That's part of our gate fee of getting it. Now, the $200-plus thousand does include all the cost of the equipment because they're hiring manpower as well. What this gives us is some flexibility. If in the future, the city reaches a point and the Chief comes back in five years and says, with the volume of calls and what's going on and with the idea of new cities popping up, Chatcom may also be engaging services with new startup cities. What I want for the city is to have the flexibility to move to the system, to be able to allow us to adhere to our established level of service that we have all, Council has agreed to as being a three-minute response time for emergency calls. That's why we've set up six police zones so that we could have that. But we've got to get the call first before we can respond. So that gives us that ability. But as the system of Chatcom or like the county grows, you know, we're going to be monitoring the ability to be able to receive those calls and for us to respond within our three-minute established response time. There could come a time in the future that you're going to hear from the Chief saying, I think it's time now for us to have our own 911 and our own dispatch. I don't know how deep it is with the equity service that we can sell our equity. I doubt it. And I think, you know, we need to try this out and try it out as a subscriber to make a determination if this is something we want to invest in more heartily.
That's good.
So I think that's my answer to you.
And if I could just tack on to that, as part of this process as a subscriber, you will, you would be getting your 911 fees directed to the city.
Thank you.
So at some point, if you wanted to do that, you would already have those fees coming to the city. That's part of this project is redirecting those 911 fees that now go to DeKalb. So if you're, if you're in the thought process of sort of apples to apples, you're actually paying some amount in terms of the 911 fees now to DeKalb. That, that income would now be turned around and come to the City of Brookhaven. And that would, you know, that amount would be, you know, used to pay for the contract with Chatcom. And, but you would, you would control that, those funds coming in.
What is the value, what is the value of the Brookhaven 911 fees? And how much annually are we collecting?
As part of the feasibility study, we did some rough calculations. It's hard to determine exactly, but the estimate, and we believe it's a conservative estimate, is about $842,000 a year that would come to the city.
Is this price negotiable? Does it take or leave it?
Well, this price is, well, the part that's negotiable is the transition fee. The subscription fee comes from the Authority. That's, I have to kind of dance.
All right.
Because I don't represent the Authority.
We'd have to ask the Authority if this is, if we can negotiate.
The Authority would be the one that would be in a position to discuss that fee.
So there's a $200,000 shortfall between the subscription fee and the annual revenue. How are we going to make that?
Wasn't there a whole educational program we were talking about doing to make sure everybody registers their cell phones?
Well, that's it. And that's why the feasibility study was very conservative, because there are three different types of phones. And if I'm getting it wrong, Joe and Chief, please correct me. We have a landline, we have cell phones, and we have burn phones. And we need to capture all of those and make sure that people are, and have this education program of look at your phone bill and see if that dollar 50 is being assigned to the City of Brookhaven. I think, you know, with this conservative estimate, I think, I think the other cities saw a little bit more coming in than what was originally estimated. And we're just going to have to do a very good job of making sure we're, you know, telling people to take a look at their bills, a very good job of getting with the phone carriers themselves. And that's one of the services that Chatcom is offering to us. They're also offering to us to help us to be sure that we are rerouting those $911 back to us. There has been discussion between Joe and myself on the payment plan for the gate fee so that we're not paying it all upfront. I'll have conversations with our Finance Director because some of this $200-plus thousand is actually for purchase of equipment, which could possibly be funded by host. So, you know, we're looking at all sorts of opportunities, but we're going to, you know, I think it comes down to, are you willing to pay for a higher level of service? And we've heard complaints since the beginning, and no disrespect to DeKalb County. We've heard complaints from our Chief and his officers that, you know, calls are not being dispatched in a timely manner. And the issue is truly safety, not only for the person that is being victimized, but for that officer. If he gets that call 10 minutes late from the first call that came in at 911, he has no idea what he's walking into and at what level or stage of crime that he's going into. And that's a concern. I think it's a concern that we heard tonight, that the current system is not able to locate all the cars on the road. So if an officer is going to knock on the door to see, to answer a call of disturbance and we don't hear from him, somebody else is going to have to be dispatched to check on that officer to see if he's down or he's working with somebody, you know. So there is a cost difference, but I think, you know, you're looking at levels of service. And I think we're going to see numbers higher than the $800,000. But I can't tell you that until we have all of the phones captured and we have the carriers understanding that they're now rerouting those funds to the city.
And if I could add one other thing, it's universal through different 911 boards I've been involved in before, but the 911 fees were never made to completely take over the cost of a 911 center. There's always additional cost. I believe usually, generally, it's about 70% coverage if we had our own 911 center.
Where's the, we're paying DeKalb County for 911 through our?
IGA?
Property taxes?
No, through the 911 dollars, the money that's being charged to people that have a phone. That's completely being routed to the county. It never stopped.
Well, who, I guess the cab covers the, if there's a gap between how much is coming off the 911? What portion of the property taxes is that being paid out of?
General fund?
Police services.
Yeah, the special taxes.
So we?
Yeah, special taxes.
Okay.
I believe so. I mean, they may have part of it in general because it crosses two places, fire.
And in our IGA with DeKalb County 911, we didn't, there was no fee associated with the IGA?
No, they would just provide the services. Now, I might mention, the county never signed that IGA. We did, but they never did. And that was confirmed again yesterday by the County Manager.
Was there any ramification for that?
I have to ask the lawyer that. Somebody doesn't get dispatched in time and maybe there's a liability. I just.
Well, if you are doing everything in the normal course and there's a dispatch glitch, you are governed by sovereign immunity as far as any liability associated with what's taking place here. So to answer the question is no. The reality of it is, is that. The, the reality of it is, is that the public perception of how quickly you are responding. And if the response time with the cab county is not adequate and you do know that and you have the ability to remedy that situation through another source that's, you know, within the economics of what you're doing, then that would be good government for you to do so.
Joe, thank you. If our subscription fee is a million seven, seventy-five a year, how much is IXP getting of that?
I believe our cost to, to the authority for adding Brookhaven is in the vicinity of fifty-five thousand or so. That's, that's the, the, for the equipment, ongoing personnel costs.
Now, they're charging, I'm just wondering, they're charging us a million seventy-five thousand. What are you charging the authority for that same service?
Our, our, our contract with the authority for Brookhaven is, is in that fifty-five thousand dollar range for, for the cost of Brookhaven. Per month.
Per month, okay.
I'm sorry. Wasn't that good a deal?
Right, this is one. So it's around six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. All right. And we need to sharpen our pencils a little bit on, on this. Especially with the gap that we, you know, I know it was a conservative estimate, with the gap that we have on the fees by the feasibility study and what this amount is. I think it'd be wise to.
The, on the agenda tonight is for the approval of the IGA.
Correct.
I would just say that if we can move the chief forward with authority to, to negotiate and maybe have the city manager, I think that.
I think Marie should negotiate.
Yeah, yeah, they have.
No, no offense.
Are, are we going to get something more than one page? I mean, is this the agreement?
No, that's not the, no.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was looking, I was trying to find it in here.
No, that was just the authority allowing us to enter in as a subscriber. That was the chairman of the authority giving us that notice. We do have the contract. The city attorney's office has reviewed it. The cab county knows what we're doing and has been so notified of that. But I can get Joe this week, if not tomorrow.
The authority would be Wendell you would have to get with?
Correct, but I, yes. He and a couple of others.
We need you to put the bold on on because, I mean, like I've said from the beginning, this is a cost benefit, not just, you know, in times of, in terms of service and human life and emergency, but also financial cost. And, and it's a, it's a, not, not cheap, obviously. And it seems like, you know, I know that the authority needs to make some money to recoup their costs and whatnot. But I really think that if we get that amount closer to what our actual, the feasibility study showed, I think it'd be helpful.
I'll be happy to work on that right away and, and then report back to you all.
Thank you.
But one, one point just to keep in mind till I circle back around with you all. You all visited.
Yes.
The center and you saw multiple dispatchers there. And you heard in your tour that they are all cross-trained. So the officer or the dispatchers that are being hired for Brookhaven exclusively are also being shared. So all those other people you saw sitting at their stations would also be serving Brookhaven because of the switching that they would be doing and the backing up that they were doing. So there, there really is a, a benefit to, to what actually we're getting. And so I'll have that information too to break down for you all. So you understand the operational side and what you're getting for that. And, and we'll look back at those numbers and, and I'll talk with Wendell and, and I'll also talk with Mayor Bodker on this as well.
Is he on the authority?
No, he's not. The city manager sits on the authority.
Okay.
They don't have a city manager right now.
Okay.
Grant Hickey's been on.
Yeah, Grant, yeah. The mayor did tell me that, but as an interim.
I'd like to remind us all that there is a, a three-month lead time in the transition. You know, if we can, if we can look at this and give authority to execute the contract subject to negotiations with our city manager, I think that that would be the best course of action for us so that they can begin this transition period.
I think that kind of sends the wrong message when you're trying to negotiate.
I mean, you're, you're ninety days would be June, July, August. Here it is March. So we have March, April, May before we're up against that hard deadline. And we have to give a six-month notice to the cab county, which we've already begun.
I would expect that we could vote on this next meeting.
Okay, we can do that, but let me just, Mr. Gebby, let me just clarify that point. It's going to take four and a half to, up to six months to transition into chat com. Because there's training, there's equipment, there's turning the satellite dishes and getting all the carriers.
I would hope that would be part of the contract too, the kind of deadlines for when that would be. You obviously would be involved in that as well, Joe.
Right, right. And, and we've included that in the contract, no, you know, no earlier than and then no later than. So those dates are in there right now.
Thanks for the clarification, Marie.
Just, just a matter of clarification, there is, there is no signed IGA with the cab county. They recognize it. And we've given them notice and they're being very cooperative.
So we don't have that six months?
About the changeover, so, you know, should you choose to do so.
I.
This is a fixed price. It took you for the five years.
I understand. And we could, if we couldn't come to some reasonable accommodation on the price, we could stay with the cab county. Could we not?
We could, but for. No, 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 we, we could and we could ask the county to place the IGA back on the, their agenda that's been there for fourteen months.
You know, I, I, I just want to revisit this one more time and, and make sure we understand that, you know, the current status quo is putting both citizens' lives at risk and police officers' lives at risk by slower response times. And I believe that our administrator can, Marie can negotiate this even if we authorize as a council. And I would just, my comment is then I think this is an important enough issue that we move forward quickly while still authorizing our city manager to negotiate because it's not a done deal until she finalizes the contract.
And that's the point, they're not going to start doing anything.
I, I think, I think two weeks is not going to, to, to kill the deal. And I, I have a real concern with falling back into our old habits of approving something that's not final. We are giving up our oversight by approving something that is an interim, you know, and, and I'm sorry, I, I have all the faith and, and negotiation ability also, but at the end of the day, we need to approve a final agreement between the city and whatever entity it is that is, is doing business with this.
Okay. Joe? Yeah, I just, well, I guess we're done with the conversation for the most part. I'd just like to close with a comment regarding the cab county. The points that we made tonight certainly were based on facts, point that out for sure. And I do want to really acknowledge from, Maria, I think you will agree with this, the cooperation that we have received from the cab county, especially from interim, interim CEO Lee May, Zach Williams and, and Morse, the people that we've dealt with mostly. And certainly not a lack of effort from the managerial standpoint in trying to resolve issues. I know they've bent over backwards, at least working with Brookhaven, I can speak truly about that. I applaud them for it. The, the problem is more of support, the staff that supports them and the difficulty they're having in dealing with that. So they've been, the collaboration that's existed between the cab and, and Brookhaven, especially since Lee got there, has been phenomenal. It's unfortunate that we've had to get to this point where we've had to leave because what's, as we've always said here, what's good for the cab is good for Brookhaven and vice versa. Just wanted to put that on record and thank them for their efforts and it's unfortunate we have to make this move, but, and I have to consider this move.
All right, thank you, Joe. Marie, we are really crunched for time now.
We are.
And, I don't know, we, the last authorized enter contract with Jago's for comprehensive plan and contract for, for comprehensive transportation plan and recreation plan.
You all have those, the synopsis, the cost of the contract.
Thank you, Joe.
Negotiated amount from the fee proposals for each of those in your folders.
Okay.
And it was my hope that these items would be acceptable to you as to the synopsis that we gave you so that we could finalize that, that negotiation. The contracts are being reviewed now, but the bulk of it, the heart of it, which is in your folder, if that's acceptable to you, I, I would like council to authorize the execution of those contracts and so that we can move forward. I'm, I'm trying to get steering committee members together and I have one signed contract and, and the other three are, are ready to go. So if you could please consider that.
All right. When will the contracts be finalized?
Hoping that they will be finalized by the end of this week or probably no later than Monday, Tuesday at the latest. All the consultants have our model contract that they're working with. And so it's, it's basically now just filling in the information you have in your file folders. The cost is, the fee proposals have been received, they've been negotiated and they are within budget. There is one that is a, a little outside of budget, but the other two proposals or, excuse me, fee proposals are well under budget. So if you average that and take that, then all three together by a total amount would be under budget.
Okay. All right, can we do the, the paving plan and the sidewalk and priority lit? Can we, can we do that in our meeting, please?
We could, we could put that under other business if you'd like.
Let's just do that.
So have an update there.
Because I'd like to try to start on time and we can go in here and have a bite with an executive session too.
Okay.
At the same time, is that?
Do we need an executive session?
For litigation, yes, please.
And personnel? No? Okay.
I move.
All right.
That we return into executive session?
It's our second?
Second.
All in favor of executive session, speaking by someone saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we're in executive session.